So we'll call this school board meeting, this workshop meeting into session at this time. And board members, I'll go through each item as usual, and if you have any questions or comments, please just stop me and we'll deal with all that. And then same thing for the superintendent. I see you have staff members here, so if you have a need to call them forward, please just let me know. And same thing, Mr. McKenna's for you, if there's anything. So let's go ahead and cover it. All right, of course, the first item will be called order. Second item will be to approve the agenda. We do have some recognitions. First of all, 3.1, recognition of Brunner Middle School Beta Club. I'm gonna make mine just a little bit larger, folks. 2018-2019 State Beta Club Quiz Bowl Junior Champions and Maya Babel Brunner Middle School Beta Club 2018-2019 State Beta Club Language Arts Seventh Grade Champion Presented by Superintendent Chambers. 3.2, recognition of 2018 Renewed National Board Certified Teachers Presented by Superintendent Chambers. Section four, there are no visitors. Section five, public comment. We may have some we don't yet know. Section six, administrative personnel appointments. 6.1 is the appointment of the principal of Ocaloosa STEM Academy Recommended by the Superintendent for approval.
And yes, sir, you will, the board will receive an email today with the recommendation. So interviews were held, I believe it was Tuesday, I believe, but a recommendation will come out to you today. You'll get the bio of this individual, and we're excited to hopefully move forward.
Okay. Very good. Thank you, sir. All right, section seven, committee and staff reports. 7.1, in-county travel paid for the period of January 24th through February the 6th, 2019 Presented by Mrs. Scallan, Chief Financial Officer. 7.2, out-of-county travel paid for the period of January 24th through February the 6th, 2019 Presented by Mrs. Scallan, Chief Financial Officer. 7.3, Northwest Florida State College Collegiate High School or Charter School and Restricted Fund of Northwest Florida State College Financial Statements and Supplemental Information for the year ended June 30, 2018-2017 Presented by Mrs. Rita Scallan, Chief Financial Officer. 7.4, update on Career Technical Education CTE Program Presented by April Branscombe Specialist Career in Technical Education. And board members, you have seen an attachment, I believe, on your agenda there that provided a lot of information about our program. Mr. Chambers, is there anything else to add, sir, at this point?
Ms. Branscombe will be here on Monday. She's currently in Tallahassee at a CTE conference right now. So she'll be here on Monday. She's excited to give some information about CTE and where we're going.
All right, so then we'll anticipate that presentation then on Monday evening.
Yes, sir.
Okay. All right, section eight, the consent agenda. 8.1, approval of the consent agenda. 8.2, approval of the minutes of workshop meeting of February 7, 2019 Minutes of Regular Meeting of February 11, 2019 Recommended by the Superintendent for Approval. 8.3, appropriation of District 2 School Board Member Capital Outlay Funds to Richburg School for Sink Fauces and Double Oven Electric Range in the Amount of $1,096.92 Presented by Mr. Dewey Destin and Recommended by the Superintendent.
I would just like to thank Mr. Destin for the generous contribution to Richburg School. I know they will appreciate it. And that facility where that's gonna be located in, it's definitely taking shape now.
It's looking, it looks good, and that's a very good program they've got going. I've eaten their cookies and other pastries a number of times.
Yes, and we've been blessed here when they brought them to a board meeting, too.
All right, then. 8.4, appropriation District 4 School Board Member Capital Outlay Funds to Edwin's Elementary School for Cafeteria Tables in the Amount of $3,451 Presented by Mr. Tim Bryan and Recommended by the Superintendent. 8.5, budget amendment number five Fiscal Year 2018-2019 Presented by Ms. Rita Scallan, Chief Financial Officer and Recommended by the Superintendent. 8.6, monthly financial statement for January 2019 Presented by Ms. Rita Scallan, Financial Officer and Recommended by the Superintendent. 8.7, invoices to be approved for payment Presented by Mrs. Scallan, Chief Financial Officer and Recommended by the Superintendent. 8.8, school donations Presented by Mrs. Scallan, Chief Financial Officer and Recommended by the Superintendent. 8.9, payroll warrant register and accounts payable warrant register for January 2019 totaling $15,239,667.35 And bank transfers for January 2019 totaling $55,750,000 Presented by Mrs. Scallan, Chief Financial Officer and Recommended by the Superintendent. 8.10, renewal of ITB 17-01 fuels gasoline and diesel Presented by Mr. Wyndham, Program Director, purchasing and Recommended by the Superintendent. 8.11, service agreement between the School Board of Ocaloosa County and Impact Applications, Inc. Presented by Mr. Brian Humphrey Student Intervention Services and Recommended by the Superintendent.
And Dr. White?
Yes, sir.
We do have Mr. Humphrey's here, if you all have any questions or need any clarification.
I see the excitement on his face. Any comments or questions, board members?
Okay, looks good.
All right, so that takes us next to Superintendent's Human Resources Recommendations. Section nine, 9.1, employees on administrative leave Presented by Mrs. Lindsay Maxi, Program Director, Human Resources. That's an information item, of course. 9.2, deferred retirement option program drop Presented by Mrs. Lindsay Maxi, Program Director, Human Resources, also an information item. 9.3, request to advertise a public hearing for adoption of revised school board policy 07-03 Employment Conditions for Educational Support Personnel Presented by Mrs. Lindsay Maxi, Program Director, Human Resources and Recommended by the Superintendent for Approval. Questions or comments?
I'd just like to say that I think this is good, that we're looking at this. I think it's important that employees, regardless whether they're instructional or non-instructional, need to be at a high standard, and I believe that working on this document, the way I've seen it, is really going to set some things very clear out there for all the employees coming. I know we've been telling employees as we've hired them, but now having this document is gonna, I think, make a difference to have it there in writing. So thank you for working on that, Ms. Maxi. Appreciate it.
And I also appreciate that, Mrs. Vancheck and the board. And as you know, over the last year or so, we've been looking at multiple policies, multiple procedures, and this is another step in making sure that we have the strongest policies that we can have for our employees.
Very good. Thank you. All right, so 9.4, request to amend position classification Presented by Mrs. Lindsay Maxi, Program Director, Human Resources and Recommended by the Superintendent for Approval.
Just for the public, if Ms. Maxi wouldn't mind just coming up and explaining how she did, how this is an exchange, is not a new position, it's not new revenue, so that it's understood that we haven't created a position, but that it's balanced out. I'd like the public to know that, please, if you don't mind. Thank you.
Yes, so Mr. Bolton, in basically promoting one of his current employees to a leaderman two, now he needs to, instead of getting an AC person, he needs a carpenter. So we're just switching those allocations, but it's cost neutral, we're not creating a new position by any means, it's just we're looking for someone with a specific skillset that's needed in that department.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Very good. Thank you. All right, so 9.5, personnel recommendations Presented by Mrs. Lindsay Maxi, Program Director, Human Resources and Recommended by the Superintendent for Approval. 9.6, employment separations Presented by Mrs. Lindsay Maxi, Program Director, Human Resources and Recommended by the Superintendent for Approval. 9.7, employee transfers Presented by Ms. Lindsay Maxi, Program Director, Human Resources and Recommended by the Superintendent for Approval.
Just had one observation or question. I've noticed that we have a number of items there that didn't really qualify as transfers, they are additions, and I appreciate the detail, and I was just, how did we get to that point? If Ms. Maxi wants to explain to us, other than she just appears to be trying to give us more information, which is always a good thing.
Okay, so Ms. Maxi, thanks for coming up in, that's 9.7.
Yes, so we're on the transfer recommendations where it says change of title, that's your question. So when we were just doing an internal audit of these type of things, when you go through, this teacher was really teaching fifth grade, and they were marked as fourth grade, so it's just us keeping track of what's going on and making sure that AS400 matches what's reality. So that's what that piece is.
All right. Thanks.
Yes.
Thank you, Ms. Maxi. All right, 9.8, read statement reimbursement of sick leave due to line of duty illness, injury, medical examination Presented by Ms. Lindsay Maxi, Program Director, Human Resources and Recommended by the Superintendent. 9.9, leave without pay Presented by Ms. Lindsay Maxi, Program Director, Human Resources and Recommended by the Superintendent for Approval. Section 10, discussion agenda, none at this time. Section 11, construction program owners representatives business. 11.1, program status report by the board's representative to the construction program. Anything today, Mr. Destin?
Well, other than the two or three items that follow after that, which Mr. Smith is here to explain, that's basically what we've been up to.
Okay, all right. Well, stand by, Mr. Dr. Smith, because we might be asking you to come forward. All right, 11.2, authorization for professional services agreement from Faithful &amp; Gould for price validation for program number six Task Order Number One, Edge Elementary School, Crestview High School, and STEM Academy Roof Replacements Project Presented by Dr. Bill Smith Specialist Facilities Planning, Maintenance, and Recommended by the Superintendent for Approval. And so, Dr. Smith, if you would come forward just for a moment and explain for the public's benefit, just what this particular professional services agreement is for.
Professional services agreement is for the price validation of our task orders. The TPM company puts together a price, that price is then validated by Faithful &amp; Gould, which is a private independent company that we hire to go over those figures to validate them and make sure that they're market-ready and fair and equitable to everybody. We do this on every task order. The two items that are on the board are both for the, one's for the roofing and one's for the security program, but we've been doing this in the very beginning of the program. It's all about validating the price that we're given.
Questions or comments, board members, regarding this? Yeah, so what this does is it helps us to ensure, helps the public to know that the prices that we're given for things are independently validated by another separate entity, a separate company, and I think they're located, where are they located?
They have offices in Atlanta and St. Pete.
Exactly. Not local.
Not only do they validate the price, they review the scope of work, they validate those numbers against the scope of work and completely review it, send it to us, and compare it to the price that's given.
Excellent. Excellent. Any further questions? That's it.
I just think it, not a question, but a comment, it just reaffirms that, you know, we are trying to be as good stewards of the taxpayer money as possible.
That's correct.
All right, thank you, Dr. Smith. All right, 11.3, authorization for professional services agreement from Faithful &amp; Gould for price validation for program number six Task Order Number Two, District-Wide School Security Upgrade Projects Phase One Again Presented by Dr. Bill Smith Specialist Facilities Planning and Maintenance and Recommended by the Superintendent for Approval. 11.4, scope modification to TPM program number six Task Order Number Two, Pre-GMP District-Wide School Security Upgrade Project Phase One Presented by Dr. Bill Smith Specialist Facilities Planning and Maintenance and Recommended by the Superintendent.
Chairman, I might add that what we're doing here is expanding some of the work, and, you know, the security nature of the issue means we can't talk a lot about it, but Mr. Smith can fill in anybody that needs to go ask.
Very good. Board members, so. As Mr. Destin said, call Dr. Smith. Section 12, technology information seat management contract, no business there. Section 13, our attorney, Mr. Jeff McKenna's, your business, sir.
Another report today.
All right, thank you.
I do have a comment, too, Mr. McKenna's, and I just wanted to say, and I probably could speak for the rest of the board, but thank you for the last couple of meetings that we've had with you regarding school board business. Of course, I won't elaborate on that due to the nature, but I just want to say thank you for taking the time to update us on everything that's going on. It definitely does help us when we're moving forward with those sensitive issues there. Yes, sir. Thank you.
All right, Superintendent, let's see, out-of-state student field trips, let's see, we got some attachments there, but then 14.2, correspondence request, and any other information you might wish to share, sir?
Yes, sir, so do have a few things.
Yeah, sure.
As you know, the last school board meeting, we talked a little bit about the change that is forthcoming as it pertains to the standards and the impact on textbooks. And at that meeting, we had Ms. Lightborn come up and give a brief update. Well, now we have another update based on correspondence from Tallahassee. So with your permission, I'd like Ms. Lightborn to come up and give you an update where we are with textbooks.
I know I've received a few emails about that, and other board members might have too, from concerned citizens.
And that's what I was gonna hope, this might answer those questions.
It will.
Okay.
Morning. So we did receive information, they have put the math textbook adoption on hold, and they actually have created a new adoption cycle. So in the 1920 school year, the adoption will be world languages and CTE. So that gives a year break, then English, then math. So they've moved math back, really, three years. The textbook companies are working out two different scenarios for us. One, where we maintain what we have, but as I told you before, a lot of those are consumable books. So there would be a fee cost to us to maintain the electronic part plus the consumable book, but we would maintain that for the three years. So we're still waiting on, the textbook companies now are working on bid prices for that. Also, just got an email yesterday that said, from the textbook depository, where the textbook companies are also working on, if school districts want to go ahead and adopt, that they're working on a three-year price for the textbooks instead of a six-year price. So that's something, that's brand-new that I literally just saw this morning before I came in here. I think our plan was to hold with what we had, because the ones that are out there may not meet the new standards anyway, so that's the update.
And also, just give a brief statement on what you understand the assessment to be.
Okay, so I saw an update from Joy Frank the other day, and it did state that there were no plans at this time to change the assessment. So that kinda puts you in a, in a, yes, a hmm, kind of place, because if the standards change, then the standards, the assessment truly is the assessment of the standards. So at this point, there's no plans to change the assessment, that's all. It was in one little sentence, so we'll see. You know, probably the next time I'm up here, I'll tell you that the assessment's changing, but right now, that's what we have.
They just haven't figured out what it is yet.
Yeah, that might.
Yep.
And just, just two comments on that, so it's very interesting, just like we do with our teachers, we talk about starting with the end in mind, looking at the assessment, then going back to the standards, and then creating our instruction. So if the assessment isn't changing, so it'd just be interesting to see what happens as we go forward. And then the other piece, I think the, which could, and I'm not sure if this is a thoughtful piece, but what will be good for us is in terms of the cost of textbooks, that Ms. Scallan does a great job with every year trying to, the amount of money that we put out for textbooks doesn't meet the allocation that comes from the state. So of course, Ms. Scallan does a great job of doing things with the money, but now, especially with the ELA and math being a year off and another year off, it gives us a chance to catch up and really have a plan going forward financially to make sure that we're ready for these adoptions.
So Ms. Lightborn, to be clear, what is our district doing for textbooks coming up? We're gonna do the consumables, right?
So we will likely stay with, again, the new three-year adoption is brand-new as of this morning, but we will likely stay with what we have. We're just waiting to find out what that cost will be. That has not been brought forward yet. The textbook companies are working on what that would be for this, the gap year. And then also, keep in mind, because ELA is being moved back to another year, we'll have another, we'll have a gap year with them as well. So those same issue, we have consumables there, also the electronic resources, so they're working on a gap year price for us for one year for ELA, but three years for math.
So Reader's Digest version, if that's even still published, brings it down to that the only funding that we'll be spending on textbooks will be for replacement consumables. Is that correct?
And the electronic resources, yes, yes.
And for the general public, consumables, what would be the definition of consumables?
So it's actually, many of our textbooks now are completely consumable, so it's like the old days, a workbook.
Right, right.
But that's what the textbook is now. There's not a hardcover textbook at the elementary level and in many of the subjects at the middle school level as well.
So consumable is another term for workbook?
It is, but it's now the complete textbook, so you don't even have that hardcover. Back in the day, when it was just a workbook, you still had the hardcover textbook to work with. You don't have that any longer.
Thank you.
So I'm clear, we're gonna be using the same materials, it sounds like, is that correct?
Yes, sir.
And just one caveat would be at the individual school level, textbook funds, if they have replacements, if they have to purchase replacement textbooks of other, whether it be math, whether it be science, so at the individual school level, they could purchase textbooks, but district-wide?
Well, that would be for replacement cost, it might be for more students, I get that. Anything else?
Colleagues?
Okay, very good. Anything else, Superintendent?
Yes, sir. Just want to give a brief update. We went to Tallahassee yesterday, myself, Mr. Horton, and Ms. Gates. We went to see the two bills that we have going forward to show our support of that. Representative Ponder presented those to the House, and they have moved forward. So that was an interesting experience. I never knew the term wave and support, so I waved, I waved and supported. So that was very interesting.
All that windshield time, waving, waving support.
And it's not the actual wave, but, so that was just an interesting experience, but we also were able to meet with Senator Gaynor, Senator Monford, Mr. Latvala, and we were able to talk about some educational pieces as well. So I thought that was a time well-spent, so appreciated that time, just wanted to give you that brief update. Additionally, we have a safety team right now that's in Orlando, getting all the most up-to-date information as it pertains to safety. So Danny Dean is leading that group, so he'll come back with some recommendations or just some information in terms of where we are. So I think that is extremely important, obviously. So looking forward to seeing the updates and the recommendations coming forward based on that meeting. We had our first whole-group parent meeting. We had that with the schools of Choctaw, Pryor, and Megs, had about 20 parents there. We received a lot of input, which I thought was great. It was an excellent meeting, like I shared with these parents and just like we share with the public, we're gonna have a number of meetings still going forward. We'll have another one in the south, but then also in the central and the north, and then we're also scheduling our ESC parent meetings as well. So all of that is now in process, so I'm excited about that. Great input from parents, so I really, really appreciated that. And then the last thing I just wanted to share is we are keeping up to date with the bills that are out there as they're going forward, as they're moving forward. And then obviously, if there's anything that's impactful, especially once it comes to be, we'll be sharing that with the board and sharing it with our principals as we go forward.
And do we have any information about funding yet for next year? Is it appropriate to talk about it now, or maybe Monday night, if we know, if we have any idea? I think the governor has submitted a funding budget, if I remember.
Yes, sir, the governor has submitted a budget. It is not detailed by school district, however, I have looked at it and backed into the numbers for our district, pretty close to them. I think you'll hear the number out there, like $221 or $24.
Saw that in the newspaper, I was excited.
Per student. However, like we always say, you kinda gotta delve into it and peel the onion. As far as unrestricted money, flexible money for the school district, it would be around $49 per student. And of course, now remember, this is the governor's budget, so we have the governor's budget, we'll have the senate budget, we'll have the house budget, and then we'll have something that comes out of all three of those to have our budget.
Well, Ms. Scallan, I don't even know that $49 per student would cover the insurance cost.
Okay, $49 per student is basically going to generate for the school district approximately $1.5 million, okay? Our increase this past year, which was 12% in insurance costs, was over $2 million.
That's what I'm talking about.
Exactly, that's before we talk about anything else. So then you may ask, okay, so the paper has $221, and I'm saying $49. Your difference is mostly attributable to two categoricals, which is safe schools and mental health. And of course, we welcome those dollars, and they're much needed, but those are dollars that are specifically restricted for a specific purpose that we are not able to use for general operating purposes.
So for the public's benefit, then those dollars for mental health and safe schools, those dollars, must they be spent in those two programs only?
That's correct, only. And of course, now remember, this is just the beginning, so, you know.
Well, it used to be, and I'm not sure if it's still the case, that the governor's budget was pretty much largely the margin orders for the legislature. I'm not sure if that's still the case.
There was a time, for many years, that the governor's budget would come out, and you could pretty much guess that that was going to be the budget within a 1.5% variance. Now, there may be some shifting between categoricals, but that was gonna be pretty much your budget.
So 1.5%.
Yeah, it used to be.
The legislature might vary by 1.5%.
And it usually would be, you know, within categoricals. However, in the last few years, it, there is, that no longer is true. It can vary greatly.
So the message then might be for folks to call their legislator and request that something be done to amend the budget as presented, so that there might be more discretionary dollars in the school district, so that we might, could at least cover our insurance cost.
That's correct. That would be helpful.
Anything else? Okay, thank you, Ms. Scallan. Superintendent, you got any more business?
The last thing I would say, just had a, Mr. Butler and the union had a good meeting with them last week, just having some good conversations, so I really appreciate that, and I have one coming up with Patrick Strong as well, and appreciate that as well. So that's all I have.
All right, thank you, sir. All right, board members, time for your business, or announcements, or requests for information. And so, Mr. Destin, sir, I'll start with you.
I don't think I have anything this morning, Chairman.
All right, thank you, sir. Mr. Bryant?
Just a couple of things. Mr. Bolton, if I can meet with you afterwards, I would appreciate that. And just also, last night, I had the opportunity to go to Fort Walton Beach High School to check out this conquest program that they have, and that's basically all the incoming freshmen, got to come with their parents and family members to check out what freshmen, got to come with their parents and family members to check out what high school life is going to be like. And I will tell you that Dr. Dugan, when we interviewed her for Teacher of the Year, this was something she was really proud of. So it intrigued me enough to ask her to invite me to come check it out, and so I went last night and just was really impressed with how, not only this school, but all of our schools try to prepare our incoming freshmen to the, the trials and tribulations and the excitement and fun of going to high school. So it gives the parents a chance to walk around the school also and meet with teachers and administrators. So to Fort Walton Beach High School and all of our high schools that do this, I just know, it's very much appreciative of, of those students who are entering the ninth grade next year.
Thank you, Mr. Bryant. Dr. Kelly?
Well, I would just say too, I appreciated the extra information that we've been getting, and also, to your point, Mr. Bryant, about high schools that are doing their NEST programs as in the Eagles, and in our K-12 schools, they have a unique opportunity to prepare their rising students for the next level. So all of those are good things. But as I listened to Ms. Lightborn talk and, and the Superintendent, it reminded me that the more things change, the more things stay the same. We've been through these cycles before, these unsure times, and we've weathered them, and with the help of Ms. Gallin and all of our other people who sit there and make predictions and set us in good stead for whatever may come, we have good people who do that. So it just reminded me of times gone by and how things, even though we think on the surface they've changed, really the cycle is the same.
All right, thank you, Dr. Kelly. Ms. Avanček?
Well, last Friday, we had a great event when we recognized our support Employees of the Year. It was a terrific breakfast. So I want to congratulate, first of all, Mr. Tom Ballard over at Mary Esther Elementary. His official title is Physical Education Assistant, but Mr. Ballard does not understand his job description, because I was actually at Mary Esther yesterday, kind of following him around, because we're getting ready to prepare his packet for state. And this man is phenomenal. He is everywhere. He does so much, and does it with a smile. The children love him, the employees love him, so we want to congratulate him. He came into the education profession by way of being a firefighter in Mary Esther, and he is using that knowledge, those skills, to bring into, he's got a great safety program he's implemented, just so many great things. So congratulations to Mr. Ballard. Also, to the two other finalists, Ms. Angel Squire is at Edge Elementary, she is a classroom assistant. Again, these people go beyond what their description is and do so much for their schools. And then Mr. Steve Stuth is a one-on-one assistant with a student at Plou, and this student's in the eighth grade, and Mr. Stuth has already assured me he will be graduating to Niceville High School with this student, and it's phenomenal. It's a shame we had to pick just one to represent our district, but, because all of these people could do such a great job, and, and it was great to get to meet everybody from the school with the, and I think they were very honored to be recognized last Friday. It was a great event, so that was terrific. The next thing is, this week, we met with the Public Schools Foundation, and I'm going to call on Ms. Gates to come up. Ms. Gates has assumed the leadership in that, and I want to thank her for doing that. But Ms. Gates, I want us to talk real quick and tell the Board about our Take Stock and Children, what we've got coming up in the next couple of months with that, and how we're going to honor those students who committed to that program, please.
Okay. I am more than honored and humbled to take over that program. I can remember when we first started that program, and the room would be filled with excited students, their families, and then a group of people, adults, who were also mentors. And this year, we actually have 18 seniors graduating, along with their mentors that kind of graduate out, and only have eight slots for, I will say, two weeks ago, we had eight slots for incoming eighth graders that would be, actually incoming ninth graders, they'll be ninth graders next year. And Nicole Snyder's doing an incredible job, and she and I have gotten together, along with some other people. We're down to needing about $2,000 to have 11 slots this year, which would be a student representing each middle school. So that's, that's our, that's our goal this very minute, for the next two weeks, is to try to do that. But then we have a, a real high goal next year of $60,000, which would be more than doubled the amount of students for, if we said one per middle school, we'd actually be saying about 22. And it wouldn't have to be one or two per middle school, it'd be making sure that we had every student, gave every student out there an opportunity to apply, and make sure we're getting those underserved and underrepresented students that opportunity. So Nicole has got some big, big ideas, so does Cindy Gates, and so do the, the people that represent us on that, at that foundation, that Board. I know a year ago, I told them this week that we were sitting there, and we were going, maybe this was going to disband, maybe we weren't going to have a foundation, maybe the Take Stock program was going to go to Northwest Florida, and my heart was hurting. I was going, I've seen great things happen. And so the community, the Board there, they stepped up and said, no, they wanted to continue this program. And our Superintendent, present Superintendent says, we're going forward, there are many things out there that we want to happen, and people like Linda Sumlin, you guys have met that group of people, they are ready to support Nicole and I, as we have a mission to fill the room again, to fill this slot, so, so that we have the number of students that are back up there, 30 seniors graduating with, with scholarships, and then we have the community mentors back in our schools again, the way that we have had in the past. So I appreciate Ms. Avanček, she's serving to represent you guys on the Board, and I'm looking forward to the opportunity to build this program back.
Great. Thank you so much. Thank you, Ms. Gates.
Thank you.
Thank you for taking that on.
And Cindy.
And the next thing about the Public Schools Foundation is, we're really pushing to get those new license plates, because I want the public to understand that the little additional fee you pay for that license plate stays right here. And what she's talking about, it goes into that and everything, and Board members, the Foundation sent you a gift, I promised them I'd get it to you, and that's what the new tag will look like, and you can go ahead and get that, and that's going to help those students. So I'm excited about the Foundation, and we got a lot of great things. I'm sure you're going to be hearing from us some more soon. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Ms. Avanček. And Mr. McInnis, just for the public's benefit, if you might take just a moment and give us some information about the Foundation, and the fact that it's an independent entity and those kinds of things, and regarding the statute and so forth.
Yes, sir. The, the Oakley Public Schools Foundation Incorporated is a separate incorporated entity in the state of Florida. It is a nonprofit corporation. It has a 501(c)(3) IRS approval and designation, which entitles it to receive donations and for persons that are donating to then make appropriate reports on their taxes for deductions. Under the statute, the Board, many years ago when it was established, voted to make that a direct support organization to the school district. And so its mission is to support the programs and students and, and projects of the school district. It focuses solely on its efforts in support of the school district. And this Board receives updates and reports from the Foundation, but it does operate as a separate, independent, nonprofit entity.
And does it receive any support from the state financially? I mean, any matching contributions or?
There are, there are funds under the Take Stock program that, based upon the, the funds the Foundation raises and the number of scholarship students they have, then the Take Stock program provides some funding back to the Foundation to help administer that program.
Very good.
The school district, as is allowed by law, has an agreement with the Foundation and provides some support in its operations, because once again, it is a recognized, direct support organization for the school board.
Excellent. Okay. Board members, colleagues, any, more questions about any of that? Okay, well, that brings us to the end of the, the meeting here, unless there's any, yes, sir?
Just one other quick thing I forgot. I told Mr. Williams, Silver Sands, I would announce this, but they're having their art fair tonight, so if you're in the Silver Sands community tonight, stop by, I think it starts at 5:30, I believe, but check out some of the great artwork that those students at Silver Sands have, are going to be presenting tonight.
Good comment, thank you. Anything, Superintendent?
And I'm sorry, Ms. Gates made me think of one quick thing. So as you all know, mentors, you know, that, that used to be a very, a very big push in the district, and that's something that I've asked Ms. Gates to really look at. We had a meeting with Pastor Bolden in the South, Mr. Chapman is organizing a group of pastors in the north end of the county. So we're going to be having an even stronger push on getting mentors back in the schools to work with some of our at-risk students or, or students who, who need a mentor. So we're excited about that, and that'll be another responsibility that Mrs. Gates will be working on.
All right. Anything else? Mr. Attorney? Anybody else? All right, this meeting is adjourned.